Good evening, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Fort Wayne Community School Board of Trustees. We begin each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And roll call of members.
Good evening, Steve Corona from the 5th District.
Good evening, Glenna Yale, 2nd District.
Tom Smith from the 3rd District.
Ann Duff, Member at Large.
Maria Norman, Member at Large.
And I'm Julie Hollisworth, elected from District 1, and also with us is the Clerk of the Board, Janet Dougherty. Good evening. And our Superintendent, Dr. Mark Daniel, welcome to your first Fort Wayne Community School Board meeting.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, so we have no awards and recognitions, and that brings us... Oh, I forgot to mention if those of you who... And I think there's something posted on the Facebook page, but you can watch this meeting on a public access channel, Comcast 54, Frontier 24. You can watch it on the Fort Wayne Community School YouTube channel. Evidently, Facebook is down, or our page is down, or something, or the connection is down, whatever. So hopefully, you can join us on one of those other three. So that brings us to the consent agenda, and those are items that come to us every week. They include the personnel report. They include the minutes from our last meeting on June 22. They include vouchers and payroll for the periods... Vouchers for the period ending July 13 and 27, and the payroll for the periods ending June 19 and July 3. And those vouchers, of course, are kept on file for...
Seven years.
Seven years? Okay. So, and members have seen all of these items. We have a motion and a second for the...
Madam Chair, move approval of the consent agenda items, including the approval of minutes from our June 22 meeting, vouchers and payroll, and the personnel report as presented to us.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And Dr. Daniel, was there anything you wanted to mention or highlight on the personnel report?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I see we have 69 new teachers on the personnel report. I take that as a positive, moving in the right direction? Okay. Okay, we have no old business, so that brings us to new business. And the first is... And by the way, if any of you want to volunteer to take any of these items, so I don't have to do all the reading, then step right up to the plate, because I kind of forgot to do that before the meeting started. So the first is a K-12 Insight contract. It's recommended that the Board approve a renewal of our existing K-12 Insight contract. The contract extension covers services related to Let's Talk, as well as our platform for survey, implementation, and analysis. This three-year contract total is for $392,490. The annual cost of the contract is $130,830, and that is funded by the Peer Grant. The survey platform of K-12 Insight informs the work around professional learning, teacher evaluation, and the culture and climate of the district. Other support regarding survey platforms and analysis will continue as needed. Let's Talk is a way for the school district to monitor the pulse of the community while giving parents, teachers, staff, students, and community members a 24/7 channel for ideas, questions, concerns, and praise. Let's Talk embodies our district's commitment to listening and responding with care. Through the Let's Talk platform, our district demonstrates authentic communication, which includes reading, reflecting on, and promptly responding to stakeholder input. This contract supports Fort Wayne Community Schools' goal to engage parents and the community. Questions will be answered by Charles Kamick Jr., our Chief Operations Officer. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Tom. Questions?
Just curious how many questions I guess we get daily on Let's Talk?
Krista informs me that lately it's been about 300.
Wow. Per day?
Per day. Yeah, per day.
Is it any particular area?
Well, they want to know what's happening with return to school. That's the biggest concern. Are you going to keep my child safe? Are you going to distribute the devices?
So not COVID, what do you think, daily rate is?
Probably close to like 50.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
And that may be upon a good day.
Come on.
How many surveys are built into this extension?
Well, we usually do three, and then we got the option of doing others, quick surveys.
Okay. And are those climate surveys or anything else?
We do climate surveys. We do... The word escapes me now, but basically, we survey our students, our parents, and our staff.
Okay.
This is coming to rescue me, I think. Am I talking well?
No.
Okay. Sorry.
So in case people didn't hear, there were about three... We've been averaging about three uncommons per day?
Yes. 300 comments a day right now. Three annual surveys. On average, we probably do about 50 inquiries, and that's across the district. But there's a lot of interest in what we're going to do with what Dr. Daniel was talking about tonight, because I'm wondering why.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Okay, thanks, Charles. Okay, all those in favor of approval of this contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anybody want to take AgileMind?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks, Ann.
It is recommended that the Board approve an agreement with AgileMind Educational Holdings, Inc., Porter Capital Corporation, to purchase a digital teaching and learning system for mathematics totaling $204,500. The AgileMind Accelerator bundle will provide intensive math supports to prepare students for an accelerated pathway. The Agile Accelerator will supplement current curriculum to identify and address gaps and to increase mastery of standards for all middle-school math students and students enrolled in Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. The agreement includes principal, teacher, and student resources, implementation supports, and ongoing intensive professional learning for coaches and teachers, along with the development of customized assessments aligned to Indiana standards. This is year three of our implementation, and this contract is for the 2020-2021 school year. AgileMind is the sole source provider for this teaching and learning system. The cost of the agreement will be paid from the general fund. This initiative is focused on improving student achievement and educator effectiveness and supports Fort Wayne Community School District Goal One: Achieve and Maintain Academic Excellence. Questions will be answered by Joanne Philhauer, Math Coordinator, and Jennifer Mabel, Curriculum Assessment and Instruction Director.
Okay, thanks. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Glenna. Questions?
So is this designed for remote learning or for our classrooms? Or both?
It can be used for both.
So how is the AgileMind Accelerator different than just AgileMind? I mean, are we adding something to what we had before? Is this something different?
That, I'm not 100% sure. I can find that information out for you. That's a good question, and I can share that with you tomorrow.
Okay. And where are we on professional development for using this product?
So, since we've started using it, we've had representatives, as well as Joanne Philhauer, out to our buildings, our secondary buildings, on a regular basis. There have been opportunities for teachers to observe. Someone utilized AgileMind in the classroom, as well as someone to support coaching of teachers utilizing the tool as well. So teachers have had ongoing professional learning in their building, so...
Right. But what about this summer?
No, not this summer. There wasn't any professional learning.
I guess that's why I was wondering if this accelerator was something new, you know, if it was add-on, then what kind of...
That's a good question. So I will find that out for you this... Tomorrow morning, and then I'll get back with you on that.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Tracy.
Tracy, will this help our students get caught up who missed out on part of last year because we had to shut down?
It can support some of that. We've also used... We're also looking at some other tools to help support closing some of those gaps in student knowledge and skills, and that's another reason why we're working diligently to provide the professional learning for NWEA, because it will let us know what potential gaps in student's knowledge and skill is. So then, we start at the grade level content, but then we can scaffold up to make sure that we're meeting individual student need. So we're using all of those tools, AgileMind, Dreambox, NWEA, all of the tools that we have to support closing those gaps that may have occurred as a result of not having additional instruction from last spring.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem.
All those in favor of approving this AgileMind contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Purchase.
I'll take the next two.
Opposed?
And we're mine.
Okay, so Tom, you're going to take the special education grants?
I'll take the next two. Is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah. All right. It is recommended that the Board approve the acceptance of a special education grants from the Indiana Department of Education for the school year 2021. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or called IDEA, from 2004, requires that after the base payment allocations are provided, additional funding is awarded to each district based on public and private school enrollments, and according to the number of private school enrollments within the local school jurisdiction. The number of children living in poverty, that is the National School Lunch Act participants, also... are also included in the calculation. Funds are used to support salaries in approximate and fringes of approximately 130 staff members. These non-competitive grants are in addition to the Special Education Fund payment. For Fort Wayne Community Schools, the Part B Special Education Grant amount for the year 20... School Year 2021 is $8,875,406. This is an increase of $301,526 from last year. The preschool education grant is for $312,884, and that is an increase of $2,179 from last year. These non-competitive grants are managed by Nikki Springer, Director of the Department of Special Education, and it supports our goal number one: Achieve and Maintain Academic Excellence. Questions will be answered by Nikki Springer.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thanks, Glenna. Thanks, Maria. Many questions? All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So now, Tom, you've got Park Center Case Managers for Elementary Emotional Disabilities Program.
All right. It is recommended that the Board approve the contract to provide case managers in our elementary programs for students with emotional disabilities for $180,000. Since the inception of our Elementary Emotional Disabilities Program in the 2011-2012 school year, we have been able to consistently increase the number of ED students remaining in their assigned schools. The review of the 2012... 19 and 20 data shows that 98% of the students remained in their assigned buildings. The contract with Park Center provides each of our ED elementary programs a case manager during the school day to support Fort Wayne Community School staff and students' behavioral needs in these 12 classrooms. The program's funding is being supported by a medical and federal grant 611 Part B, and will be overseen again by Nikki Springer, Director of Special Education, and this supports our goal of achieving and maintaining academic excellence. These questions will be answered by Jennifer Burning.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Maria. Thanks, Tom. Questions? Okay. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Maria, you've got Verizon MiFi.
Is that Neepy? MiFi? Okay. Thanks, Jack. Keeping me squirt away. All right. It is recommended that the Board approve the purchase of 9,000 MiFi cellular hotspots from Verizon Wireless of Annapolis Junction, Maryland for $1,349,910. There will also be an additional monthly service cost of $148,410. The MiFi's will be assigned to students who do not have Internet access at home for remote learning. Parents apply for the MiFi's through the MyFWCS portal or at their school during drive-through registration. The MiFi's will be configured so only FWCS devices can connect to them. Discussions were held with other Internet providers, however Verizon Wireless offered the best solution that limits connections to FWCS devices and provides better mobility. Fort Wayne Community Schools has applied for the GEAR Governor's Emergency Education Relief Grant to support this project. In case other funds are required, we will propose the use of CARES Act, E-S-S-E-R, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funding, and Jack Bird, Director of Technology, is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Glenna. Questions?
Jack, a month or so ago, you used a phrase that captured my attention. You talked about anytime, anywhere learning, and with this, are we there?
Yes. This will provide one of the biggest gaps that we had to face, and that was students not having Internet access at home. So this will provide them with that connectivity.
Verizon signal in our school district is strong and reaches all points?
As best as any other cellular carrier. I will not... I did not walk every spot, though.
I wouldn't want you to. So it's about $9 a month for the service? That's a pretty good deal, if my math is correct.
It's $1,649 per month, per hotspot.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that nine months or 12 months?
That is 12 months.
Do we pay that?
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah. The $148,000, that's a per-month charge.
Right.
And we can keep that active as long as we need to. So if we want to continue through the summer, we have that option. If we decide that we want to pull those back in at the end of school, we have that option.
Okay. Do I understand it correctly how these work, so that like, if I... If I want to go to my grandmother's house and work on my homework and take my iPad or my laptop, I just take that... I just take that MiFi with me?
Correct.
And plug it in? Or it's supposed to be charged... I don't know how it works, but anyways.
Yeah. As long as it's charged.
As long as it's charged, and it'll provide my device with Internet access.
Correct.
Awesome.
Okay.
That's so cool.
This is very impressive.
It is impressive, and in our discussions with you before, I think the big reason that we settled on this was security.
Yes.
Right?
That was one of the big reasons. Yes.
Yes. It will not power or provide access for every device in the home.
Correct.
It will also only provide access for Fort Wayne Community School-issued devices.
Yes.
And then we rely on our security that we have on those devices.
Correct. That way, if they take the device to a non-FWCS connection, it's still filtered.
Okay. Awesome.
So how... I don't know the technological term, but how much power does this have? Can... I know that the students have to stream video, YouTube, and things like that for a lot of their learning, so will this...
Yeah. Our tests right now have come up with about 10 megabits, which is sufficient. To do a Zoom, you need about 2 megabits to do that, so we found that there is sufficient bandwidth. Now, that all depends on your cellular signal, of course. So if you're in a weak cellular area, you might not get 10 megabits.
Okay. So if you go northern Indiana or something, the signal might not be as strong?
Correct.
This recommendation is for 9,000 of these MiFi's. Have we... Through the registrations, have we... Do we have a number yet with regard to how many families are in need of the MiFi's?
The only number I have right now are the people that completed the registration online. We are processing the paper forms. In fact, as I speak, we have people entering those forms into the system. So as of right now, I have 3,900 that have applied online.
And have we taken delivery of these MiFi devices already?
We have not, but they are in a warehouse from Verizon.
Okay.
How did we do on the computers? We did loan out to some of our junior... Our seniors last year. Do we get them all back, and do we have a way of ensuring that when we distribute all this equipment, we can retrieve it?
We have not retrieved all of the computers from this past year. We're about 20 that are still out there. Some of those students are coming back to us, so... And we've been in contact with their homes to, you know, get the device back, and then, you know, we... We will treat this, in talking with Kathy Friend, very similar to the way we treat our textbooks. If we have textbooks that are not returned, we can issue a accounts receivable for that.
So a bill? We would bill the family if they kept the computer?
Yes.
And would we be billing at the full rate that we paid for them, or would they be reduced?
We would look at any depreciation.
Okay. 20 out of how many?
We delivered 418.
Okay. So we got most of them back. Great.
There was something I was going to ask you. Oh, yeah. Do... Am I... How many days of drive-through registration are there left?
I think today was it.
This is not really a question for you, Jack, but...
Oh.
We have two more.
Two more?
Two more days? Okay.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. So for all those people out there watching, if you have not, you know, if you... If it's something that you're interested in, I know there are some questions from parents about whether they should go through drive-through registration or not. Some people are like me. They like to do things in person. They like to fill out forms. You know, they like to go old-school. So if that's true, then you want... You can go through drive-through registration tomorrow, or they could go to Face Center?
That's the only place they could go.
Oh, that's the only place you can...
Yes. Starting at 2 o'clock tomorrow and at 8 o'clock on Wednesday.
So 2 to 8 tomorrow?
2 to 6 tomorrow, and then 8 to noon on Wednesday.
You want to step up the microphone, Fay, and talk about that?
We're trying to provide options in the morning and in the afternoon.
Okay.
Today, we were open from 8 until noon. Tomorrow will be 2 to 6, and then tomorrow, or Wednesday, will be 8 to noon again.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's...
Just at Face. They can go to the schools by appointment, but if they want to do a drive-through, that's only at Face.
Oh.
We had it at the schools Thursday and Friday of last week.
Gotcha.
And then this week, it was Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Okay. Okay. So those hours this week at Face?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Jack, does this give us the capability... Should we have to shut down the school due to an outbreak or another wave or something for all our students to do online learning?
Yes.
Great. That's good news. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for all of your work on this, Jack. I know that you and your staff have done a lot of work, done a lot of research, probably done a lot of testing of equipment, but this is just going to be a great thing for our students.
Thank you.
Like you said, anytime, anywhere learning.
Thank you.
So thank you. So all those in favor of approving the purchase of the 9,000 MiFi hotspots, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And Maria, you've got the Lenovo power supplies.
Fabulous. It is recommended that the Board approve the purchase of 5,000 power supplies for student Lenovo 11E laptops from Prosys of Indianapolis for $180,550. These power supplies, in addition to the existing power supplies, allow students to take home power supplies while still leaving a sufficient number at school for at-school charging. We will propose the use of CARES Act, E-S-S-E-R, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funding, and Jack is still here to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Thanks, Glenna. Thanks, Tom. Any questions? So just to clarify, we're going to give kids a bag, and then they'll have a device.
Yes.
And then they'll have a charger cord, and all that'll fit in the bag.
Yes.
And then I suppose they can leave the MiFi at home if they're... If they need one.
They can, and it has a power supply as well.
Okay. That has a power supply as well. Okay. I was looking them up on the... On Amazon today.
Can I get one?
Oh, thinking about it. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have a bid recommendation for copy paper. It's recommended that an award be made to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder meeting specifications and quality standards. The company is The Paper Corporation. Location is Des Moines, Iowa, and the total is $181,247.65. This bid is for a supply of copy paper to be stocked in the warehouse. The largest portion of the bid is for 7,560 cases of 8.5 x 11 white paper. All schools and central administrative units are served by this supply. A comparison of prices by item is on file in purchasing... A comparison of prices by item is on file in Purchasing Services and may be reviewed upon request. The prices of the recommended bidder reflect a 12.18% decrease when compared to the last bid that was opened in June of 2019. Invitations to bid were sent to 16 prospective bidders with 10 not responding. Liberty Paper Los Angeles and Midland Paper in Wheeling, Illinois did not meet the bid specifications. So you can see below in the recommendation that there are eight bidders and there are their bids and The Paper Corporation from Des Moines, Iowa was the lowest. Questions will be addressed by Director of Purchasing Services, Rod Raskey. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Maria. Questions? Rod, I'm curious. So last year, we shut down physical school in, on March 16?
13.
15?
13.
13?
Sounds right.
Okay, 16th was the first day we didn't have.
Seems like two years ago.
Nah, nah. But of course, we did a lot of printing of packets. So I'm just curious, did we use more paper than usual last year, less, or about the same?
We actually used less, even with all the printing of the packets, we used quite a bit less than the overall volume because we normally would be ordering somewhere around probably 9,000 cases on our normal year.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Rod. Okay, all those in favor of approving this bid signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Now we have an emergency project. It's recommended that the board declare an emergency for the following project and allocate funds from the emergency allocation within the Capital Projects Fund. So, and this is at the Nutrition Center, the replacement of a refrigeration rack compressor and associated repairs for $43,775. The work is related to the existing refrigeration rack at the Nutrition Services Processing Center. Rack compressor number three discharge valve failed and the refrigeration rack lost the liquid refrigerant charge, causing irreparable damage to the compressor. This emergency request is for the material and equipment cost associated with lost refrigerant, refrigeration compressor and other system component replacements required to complete the repair. Labor costs are covered under our current preventative maintenance service contract. So questions will be answered, or will be addressed by Director of Facilities, Darren Hess. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Steve. Questions? Okay. All those in favor of declaring an emergency for the following project signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have a change order for the renovation of Price Elementary School. It's recommended that the board approve the following change order at Price Elementary School, the contractor is Schinkel Construction, Inc. The original contract amount is $6,658,000 and the addition that we are being asked to approve is $467,400, which is just a tad over 7% increase. The original contract for the renovation of Price includes the overall building renovation. At the time of the contract award, a conservative approach was taken in accepting alternates in order to ensure that the overall program would fall within budget. So there were two alternates totaling the $467,400, wanted to add a separate parent pickup lane and rubber flooring in the corridors, which were not accepted originally. So it's now recommended that we accept these alternates and fund, and it is funded with the 2016 School Basic Renewal Restoration and Safety Project or the 2016 bond. And questions will be addressed by Director of Facilities, Darren Hess. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Maria. So Darren, this is a good thing, right? So we, we.
Yes.
Estimate that we have enough money left that we can accept that with, in our projected budget that we can accept these two extra bids.
Correct. So we're finishing up Northrop High School, for example, here next week.
I noticed that. It looks great out in front, by the way.
Thank you. You have finally cleaned up the yard.
Everything removed and the property graded and.
So that was our largest liability still left out there and we feel very confident that with the program savings now we can move forward and pick up some of these alternates we held back.
Great. And did I notice the temporary classrooms are also gone at Northrop?
Correct. It's now repaved and ready for teachers next week.
Awesome. Awesome.
So Darren, where will, will this parent pickup lane come off state?
Actually, right now, they currently have, they come down Rosemont and Stoop and pick up along the street.
Okay.
So it backs up the whole neighborhood. Just further south, we picked up years ago, I believe, five properties.
Yeah.
Off of Huffman. So it'll enter in and off of Huffman.
Okay.
Which will completely separate it from our buses and from our parking, which is our ideal situation.
So it'll enter from Huffman and exit somewhere else or?
The, the entrance and exit will both be off of Huffman.
Okay.
It'll be a loop.
Okay. Okay. Great. I'm glad, I'm sure Price will be glad to get that. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. All those in favor of approval of the change order signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, now we have the 2019 extracurricular account equipment purchases. It's recommended that the attached report of equipment purchases be officially accepted by the board. Equipment purchases, including equipment reconditioning, over $500 from extracurricular funds are subject to approval by the Board of School Trustees. The State Board of Accounts has agreed that these purchases and reconditioning may be accepted annually. Attached is the report submitted by Fort Wayne Community School Unit Heads for 2019. Questions will be addressed by Chief Financial Officer Kathy Friend. So do we have a motion and a second?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thanks, Glenn, thanks, Ann. So Kathy, this report looks a little light as compared to years past. Is that why, why, because we were shut down? There were probably not a lot of.
No, because this was for calendar year 2019, so.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
But I guess I just remember in the past this being like at least a couple pages long.
You know, there are some times when we get, if we get large sums of money from a donor ma, typically over 5,000, we put it in our district donation account and spend it from there. This is just things that were spent right out of the extracurricular account.
By the buildings.
Right.
Correct.
And you would have approved those other kind of purchases through the vouchers.
Right.
So this is just giving you approval for things that were not on the voucher list.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Still, it's light. Just curious.
Yeah. No, it does seem lighter.
Yeah.
And, and we went through every single extracurricular account to make sure that we picked everything up, so.
Oh, no problem.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. It does look lighter.
Yep. Okay.
Some pretty impressive items on this, on this list. I, I notice.
That's the next.
Vera Bradley donation.
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
This is something separate.
Never mind.
This is how they may have spent that money, Steve.
Never mind.
The next, you're right, the next list is very impressive.
I see it, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, all those in favor of approving the report signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, next we have the report of 2019 gifts, grants and donations. Recommended that the attached list of gifts, grants and donations be officially accepted by the board. Throughout the school year, various schools receive gifts and donations from individuals, organizations and businesses. Authorization to receive gifts is a board function. The State Board of Accounts has agreed that a listing of all gifts received during any one year and ratified by the board would meet the audit requirements. Attached is a long listing of gifts, grants and donations as submitted by various Fort Wayne Community School Unit Heads for 2019. A detailed report is on file in the business office. Unit Heads are encouraged to express appropriate appreciation for any and all gifts received. Questions again will be addressed by Chief Financial Officer Kathy Friend. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Steve. Questions? Comments?
So I can now sing the praises. I, see, I moved from the ukulele rack in the last recommendation to, to the backpacks that were donated by, looks like Pine Hills Church and then Vera Bradley to a couple of schools and then the Heffner Foundation gave us over 100 grand for the, I think, the baseball facility at Northrop. So some really nice contributions there, but everyone is, every, every donation is appreciated.
And it's not, and it's not just corporations, but churches and parents and PTAs and it's nice to know that people are so fond of our schools and, and we do have that community support.
And I think I added up the, roughly, because the B-Instrumental Music Program through the Fort Wayne Community School Foundation is on here that purchases instruments for our middle schools and last year, over $60,000 in instruments were purchased for our middle schools.
Wow.
That's awesome. But you're right, Steve, this is, you know, this is an awesome list where, you know, not, we're thankful to our community and all the organizations within our community for the support. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. All those in favor of approving the gifts, grants and donations for 2019 signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, next we have a custodial services agreement. It's recommended that an award be made to renew our custodial services agreement with Sedexo Services of Indiana Limited Partnership, Woodland Park, Colorado, for one year commencing July 19, 2020. Terms of the original agreement from 2010 allow for service adjustments and price adjustments for renewal years to compensate for inflation. The one-year renewal amount is $9,035,051.59. And Kathy Friend, Chief Financial Officer, is still here to answer any questions. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Tom. Questions?
Got to believe they've been working overtime to get our buildings ready for the first day, whenever that happens, hopefully, as scheduled, but, and I assume that they're going to be extra busy during the year and we've taken that into consideration with extent, with this extension.
One of the things that we added in this contract was some evening supervision for that very reason, to make sure that our buildings are clean when the students arrive back the next day. So I, I think that's, that's one of the new things in this contract. And I was going to say the, that, that's the main big thing in terms of service change would be those, that additional supervision that they're going to provide. But all in all, they're, you know, they're, they're providing us really good service with the, with the, the contract that we have.
Yeah.
And they have, they have been very receptive to supporting us in any way that we need them to and so hats off to them. They're, they're doing a great job. They, I'm sure they're like a lot of organizations and could use additional staffing just because of the times that we're in, so I'll put a plug in for them. I know that they could actually, you know, hire additional staff that would, that would fit into their existing program, so if you know anyone that needs a position, tell them to contact Sedexo.
Okay. And this comes out of the operations fund, correct?
It does.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of approving the, this agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have board action regarding the fourth district board member. It's recommended that the board appoint a candidate to complete the term of Jordan Levemov, the board member representing the fourth district. This term expires December 31, 2022. On June 16, the board advertised it was taking applications from Fort Wayne Community School District Four residents to fill Jordan Levemov's empty seat. When the application period ended on June 30, there were 10 applicants who met the qualifications. Must reside in District Four for at least one year, be registered to vote in District Four and be at least 21 years old. On July 8, the board met in executive session as allowed by law and selected four candidates for consideration for the seat. On Tuesday, July 14, the board met in public session to interview Ms. Raleigh Booker, Ms. Janay Johnson, Ms. Holly Munoz and Ms. Alicia Heggins. At this time, the board will accept nominations from members for appointment to the District Four seat. Each person nominated will be voted upon by the board in the order of nomination and four yes votes are required to appoint a nominee.
Madam President.
So we have, do we have a motion and a second to begin the appointment process?
I move that we open the appointment process.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so now we're open for nominations.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Ms. Janay Johnson to fill the fourth district seat.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Raleigh Booker. She is a Fort Wayne Community School graduate. She attended Bonfroiser Park Memorial Park and is a Southside graduate. She has three kids in the district that go to Arlington. She has experience in working with a diverse population. She worked at a community center in Indianapolis and understands the needs of our district. She has been following the issues in education and understands that we are underfunded due to vouchers and charters and those types of things. I think she understands the dynamic of working on a board, understands that the board speaks with one voice and she also has, she lives in the fourth, yet she sends her kids to Arlington, so she has, knows a lot of people, you know, not just in her district, but around other districts and Fort Wayne Community Schools. I think her, she, she's self-employed, so she has a flexible schedule where she can attend our meetings. And I also thought she was very genuine and personable. She came well-prepared for her interview and she gave thoughtful answers and was very well-spoken.
Okay. Any comments regarding Janay Johnson?
Sure. I'm impressed with, I, I like both candidates that have been nominated.
Go to one.
Raleigh's assets as a parent and some of her work experiences. I, I like Janay, another graduate from Southside High School. She has, she has experience as a former substitute teacher with us. Happened to know that she was highly sought when she worked for us. Everybody wanted her to be in their classroom. She also has more recent experience with us through her employment with Junior Achievement. Prior, prior to working for Junior Achievement, she was a volunteer in our classrooms and I know I've heard from several parents who worked with her and were impressed with her. But she then took a paid position with JA as a consultant to develop educational material videos that were used during our remote learning period beginning in March. And I know that because of her in. And I know that because of her in-classroom experience, that what she was delivering, the product that she was providing was well-received. I like her because she has experience on a community board, at least one, I know the Three Rivers Festival Board. And so I like that and understanding, I think, with that experience, how boards operate with paid staff. So for that and other reasons, I'm just impressed with her. But again, I, I think both candidates are, are good vets for us.
I think we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. You don't necessarily have to comment, but just, just to be clear. And so Janay Johnson was nominated first, so we'll vote yes or no on Janay.
I will vote for Janay.
Okay.
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No?
Yes for Janay.
No for Janay.
No for Janay.
What'd you say?
No.
No.
Uh-oh.
Are you gonna vote?
You really did it to me, didn't you? I'm gonna vote yes for Janay. So now we, so we do not have a fourth district board member yet, so now we move on to Raleigh Booker. Vote yes or no.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now wait a minute. No, yes, no. So it's the same thing, right?
Right.
Okay. What'd you vote?
Yes.
Yes. I'm gonna vote no. So now we need to, let's hear some comments and see if we can, you know, I'm gonna have to say that I was very impressed with all four people that we nominated. I do believe that any of the four, for their various reasons, could be an asset to the board. So I could probably be convinced one way or the other. I was impressed with Janay because of her previous board experience. I was impressed with her personality and her, you know, I mean, and like Raleigh, she was, she was brought up in the fourth district and still lives in the fourth district, and both were graduates of Southside High School. But I felt that as far as experience being on a board, Janay was, that that would be an advantage. So, let's go, let's go from left to right now because I've said something, Steve says something, so Maria.
I would like to just add about Raleigh. As a, the only board member that's a current parent, I thought that it was really important to have that parent perspective on the board. Not that you all, I know that some of you are recent FWCS parents, not to, you know, you know, not to say anything bad, but I think that it would be good to have a voice, another voice of a parent on the board. And I don't think that the fact that Raleigh hasn't served on a board before put her at any deficit. I don't think I had any concept of what I was walking into, and I think that I caught on fairly quickly, so. So yeah, I, that would be, and not, and not to say I would be fine with Janay as well, but if I put the two together, I like the fact that Raleigh is a current parent.
And that's exactly what I was going to add, Maria, was that, you know, I no longer have any kids in school, and you are the only one left who has a kid at school, and it does make a difference. I mean, I feel like I know, knew, no, I'm not gonna know anything in the school, I'm not know. But you know, I just, I just understood what was going on as a parent and, and can work with parents because I had a kid, I had a kid in the, in the district. So I think that that helps, and her kids are young, three at Arlington. I just think having another parent on our school board would be a definite benefit.
Tom, any comment?
Well, one of the things that I thought was just the most important asset that Janay would bring, not just the board, but the school system and the entire community, is her experience with Junior Achievement. We have spent a lot of time at this board talking about careers for our students who are coming out of school. She fits right into that. I don't know of anybody else who even comes close, because I do believe that career development is one of our key responsibilities. We've talked about it time and time again at this board, and that's why I think she is the best candidate. She's also, has a very strong personality. She had the strongest personality of all the candidates. She was powerful in her speaking, and I agree with what Julie said, all the candidates were great. But for me, it was her strong personality. I think she showed great leadership qualities, just in the way she spoke and addressed this board. And again, she brings that skill, that ability to know about career development. To me, that is the most important thing, and that's why I support Janay.
Glenna?
Well, both of the candidates that it's come down to are very well-qualified and would be an asset to this board. But the main reason I was personally drawn to Raleigh Booker was, one, her passion. She spends so much of her time in her community, reaching out and working with young people, and I just really felt she would be a very articulate voice for that, that district, which, again, both of them would represent the district well. But because of her involvement in the level that she's involved in with all these different organizations in her community and with the youth, her experience in mental health and other, and social work would give us an added insight and window into the needs of that community. And for that reason, I, I would continue to support her nomination.
Any other comments?
Yes. As I looked at these two individuals, here's how I measured their experiences and talent. Raleigh, to me, has had a good career as a manager, not as a leader, that I see more in Janay's experiences. Managers do things right. Leaders do the right thing. And the experiences that Raleigh had was as a manager in an Indianapolis community center. In visiting both individuals' Facebook pages, I, I really didn't see a lot of information from Raleigh about education or other issues. I think the advantage that Maria came into this was that she was immersed in public education. She was working on her master's degree. She was very fluent in all the issues of the day, and very clearly, that was an easy vote for us. I, I see Janay more, in spite of the fact that Janay is not a parent, she's actually closer to our district than Raleigh is. I talked to Raleigh's principal, said, yeah, she's in our building and is, and participates. But, but above and beyond that, I don't see any additional community engagement in Fort Wayne. Raleigh's engagement was in Indianapolis when she was employed at a community center in working with youth. And so, you know, I just don't see that connection with Fort Wayne Community Schools on her side. And that's what I see with respect to Janay's experience, not only through Junior Achievement, but with her work at Whitney Young and also in an English class at the Ellen County Juvenile Corrections Center. So I believe that she has a greater understanding of the issues facing our school district, and that's why I support her.
So, revote? Unless there are any more comments? Okay, so Janay Johnson.
Yes.
Glenna?
No.
Yes for Janay.
No.
No.
No. So I'll vote, I guess it doesn't matter how I vote. I just realized that. Irrelevant, so I'll abstain. So that brings us to Raleigh Booker. Steve?
No.
Yes for Raleigh.
No for Raleigh.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So for those of you who don't understand that if we fail to reach an agreement at this board meeting, then that decision goes to the judge of the superior?
Circuit Court.
Circuit Court.
Judge.
County Circuit Court or what? Okay.
Is there a timeframe?
I believe...
Yes, 30 days.
There's 30 days from the time.
Yeah, and we're, we're coming up, we're coming up on that. So I do not want this decision, I want this to be a board decision, so I vote yes.
So you voted Raleigh.
So, yes, so Raleigh Booker...
Is the board president.
Raleigh Booker, by a four-to-two margin, is appointed to the District Four seat.
Okay.
Congratulations. And, like I said before, all four of the people that we nominated, I think, were, we were lucky, I believe, to see not only the interest that we got from the fourth district, but the candidates that we got from the fourth district.
Well, congratulations to Raleigh, and I think that we achieved our ultimate goal of filling Jordan's spot with a person, a black person, and frosting on the cake, a Southside graduate. Jordan would be awfully proud of that.
Jordan would be, yes.
That an archer is going to succeed him in his chair.
Gotta have a Southside person to needle the Northside Superintendent graduate.
And speaking for myself, she's a little bit younger than me. Youth was another factor. She's not on Social Security, so hopefully she's gonna be around for a while.
Hopefully. Any other comments?
Nope.
Okay, so that brings us to the close of the business end of our meeting. And so we have a report from Superintendent Mark Daniel, who will provide an update on the Fort Wayne Community School reentry plan. And board members have a printout of the presentation in your packet, so, Dr. Daniel?
All right. Well, thank you, Madam President, and buckle up because this is gonna be a bit of a presentation. But it shows you the complexity of this issue. This reentry plan is constantly evolving. We wanted to do such because we're responding to what's happening in regards to our health and safety concerns. Of course, those are changing daily across our state, as well as what's happening locally, which I believe it's going to be a local decision more than a statewide decision. So we're very much in tune to what's happening, and we have, again, I'm just gonna tell you, the chiefs and the other staff that have been part of this discussion, it's been extremely pleasing to see their expertise, as well as how they're collaborating together to come to these, to these, shall we say, recommendations. But I'll say, again, these are very difficult decisions, because it seems as every time we open up or come to one conclusion, it opens the box for another particular item. So with that said, one of the things I think Chris is gonna be very pleased, hopefully she'll see a reduction of those 300 questions on a daily basis, because people truly wanna know, July 29 is coming, and with July 29, we've asked them to decide, are they going to, are they gonna be in person or are they going to be remote as far as their children? Parents are asking, what does it look like? How does school start? When does school start? Now move that to teachers, and teachers are absolutely on the edge of their seat, wondering, are you really gonna start school? When are you gonna start school? How are you gonna support our professional development? How are you gonna make our building safe? And as you saw on that, that first slide, there was, there's a list of things that were being discussed. So to let you know, we have weekly discussions with our FWBA leadership. Those discussions are both with the president, as well as teachers on their board, as well as our Uniserve Director. We also are meeting with them bi-weekly, and that's through the traditional method, and that's led by Charles. So therefore, teacher input is, is, should I say, it is being included in these, not just discussions, but in our decision-making, and I want to tell them thank you for this input. We need it, because this is a decision that we alone aren't making. Ultimately, yes, someone has to decide, but I feel very comfortable receiving this information and us processing it. So with that said, the start of school, which is, as you know, we're originally to start school on Monday, August 10 for students. We have decided to move that to Thursday, August 13, and here's some of the reasons why. We already have built into our calendar those three days, one in March, one in April, and one in May, that we would use to make up those snow days. We do not see the need for those snow days with the fact that we finally have one-to-one. You've heard of all the great technology advancements we have for our students. We will have connectivity, we will have one-to-one, we can have, and if we've been truly practicing and implementing remote learning, we are, I will say, it is truly learning going forward, truly learning with, with standards being addressed. It's not, are we trying to maintain? So we're moving forward with learning of the standards. Very important for that to happen. Also, it's not impacting the end of the calendar. So it's still May 25. By the way, what are we doing prior to that time, prior to August 13? Well, we originally had in our calendar August 6 for the starting, with teachers returning for their professional development. That will still remain. So August 6 and August 7, we will still have those days for teacher training, as well as principal leadership being involved in that. We're then have a weekend, and I know teachers are saying, okay, I'm dying to figure out how to do unit lesson plans in regards to remote learning. Well, they'll have that information on the 6th and 7th, then they go for their weekend break, if they want to continue that, because we'll start again on that Monday. So on the 10th, we'll also have professional development, primarily geared towards remote learning and how to teach in this, see that, using that modality. Now, it falls almost hand-in-hand with what we've been doing regarding... Now, it falls almost hand-in-hand with what we've been doing in regards to deep learning. So that's how do you bring the, again, the curriculum to life? How do you utilize technology to drive that? How do you, if you will, as some of you know, use blended learning? How do you use flipping of classrooms and so forth? We are, we truly think we've set that stage. Now, even tomorrow and Wednesday, our QIT teams, which is Quality Improvement Teams, are meeting. They're meeting in each of their buildings. Those are teacher leaders with building leaders, principals and assistant principals and so forth. They'll be going through these phases as well because we think the best professional development is from the ground up and using teachers as part of those, as part of, shall we say, educating each others and peers, helping peers. So very excited about that piece. You're gonna hear more of that information, though, from various chiefs, as well as Ramona. Now, let's go to the next slide.
Hey, Mark, let me just ask, because I know teachers are, you know, watching too. So they always wanna know, you know, am I gonna be able to use those other two days to, you know, get my classroom ready, get my remote learning work ready, meet with my colleagues in my department, that kind of thing?
Yes, so we are honoring those last, shall we say, the two days prior to the students arriving. We're honoring those days. We'd like to see those used as they have been in the past. So teachers will have a chance to have their time to set up the rooms and so forth, plus principals will need to spend time specifically addressing what's going on in their building.
Right.
Now, you can imagine that QIT team, they're gonna be individualizing their safety plans in their buildings because each building's unique. Let's work on that. We're steering them towards that way, as well as how do we figure out remote learning? So...
Will we go then on, in those days in March, April, and May?
No, we'll not. Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Those days in March, April, and May will now be regular attendance days, yes. Now, there's, just also, this needs to be explained, too. We are using some grant dollars to provide the extra days of training, and it's based on hourly rate per our contract. So we are using some grant dollars, not general fund dollars, to cover this cost of the additional hours of training for, again, at the beginning of the year. So very pleased with that. And we'll, again, those other days are already accounted for. So again, no additional dollars in regards to regular salary, but some additional dollars in regards to training. Okay, so what does return to learn mean? Well, elementary students, as we know, they can attend in-person five days a week, or parents may choose a five-day remote learning modality, if you will, or presentation of learning. Middle and high school students will, still worth thinking of the two or three days a week, and you read there, and that's alternating every other Wednesday. Or parents may choose five-day remote learning. Key, though, is parents, please, please respond by July 29th. We need that data because that data starts to do what? It starts us in the whole cycle of how are we gonna allocate teachers in both the in-person learning or face-to-face learning or remote learning? And we're seeing that evolve as well. So very, very important for that to happen. We also believe this, so the next slide, we also believe that we need a range or a window for people to experience this, parents and students, and allowing there to be flexibility from, if they say, for example, if they've chosen to go remote, maybe in that first three weeks, they decide that's not best for the family or for the student. We'll then allow those students to return to in-person or face-to-face. We feel that's very, very important. And you can see the various options we have there. We think that if they wanna, again, if they wanna make that decision even before the three-week deadline, that's okay. We'll move them. That might even be a benefit for us because we won't have a large number at that date of September 3rd. But we also say this, traditionally, the district has said, if you're going to move from one building to another, or you change something in regards, we need a week to sort through that with transportation. So please give us a week to do that. And it's sort of nice because it falls around that Labor Day time, so it gives us some extra time. So give us a week to do that. But once that three-weeks time is there, we want students remain in their remote learning environment for the full semester. So again, trying to create consistency in what we do. Okay, question?
Could I ask a quick question? You said that they will remain in that mode of learning for the full semester?
For the full semester.
And that's regardless of if we get out of Phase 5?
No, no.
And everything is open back up?
If everything's open back up, we'll, we're trying to look at that probably every, you know, see what the trends are every two to three weeks. Our goal would always be return full-time, one-to-one.
Okay, just wanted to verify that.
That's the, we know that's the best mode of learning.
Of course, but I just wanted to make sure that's not written in cement, so...
Not written in cement.
Okay, good. We're flexible.
Because it even begs to the question, what happens after the holidays? What happens there? And I'll tell you why that's important, because you're gonna see some of what our discussion is, we need students, both in the remote world and the face-to-face world, to be very similar in their progression of the sequence, or I call it curriculum mapping. So we don't have students here and the students here because hopefully, we do return to full in-person learning, face-to-face learning. And if that would happen at the end of the semester, we want people to be very close on that mapping. Okay, so any questions on the start date and the return to learn as far as the choices and the three-week window of, they can try it. If they don't see it's working, they have a choice to have, go back to that other, whatever their best, what they think is best for their child.
I like that grace period. I like that.
Okay.